Aye. Opposed. We are in open session. Whereas the Essex County School Board had convened a closed meeting to come to state pursuant to the affirmative record vote, in accordance with the provisions of the Freedom of Information Act, and whereas section two dot two dash three seven one one, print number eight six one, of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board, that such closed meeting was conducted in Virginia Hall. Now therefore be it resolved, the Essex County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, public business matters awfully exempted from public open meetings, to which this certification applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting, were discussed or considered. The clerk of the board will certify the board members. I certify.
I certify.
I certify. I certify. At this time, we have scheduled a closing meeting for the twenty one, twenty twenty two budget. Um, nobody signed up for that, so um, we are going to recess until seven o'clock, because that was the advertised time for the business meeting. And so we will take a twenty-two minute recess, and come back at um, seven o'clock, and then do a roll call of the budget, and then we'll also do a motion on the closed session at that time. Alright, so we're recessed until seven P M.
[laughing]
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 Oh, it's just like that.
Oh my.
But that's maybe what you like.
Who did it?
Yeah, they're very, very good.
I remember that.
Yeah, it's important, but they don't have any proper that. I think the House is not taking no major out of state.
Oh, yeah.
That has some bad, okay, and it's probably got some bad. I mean, they just pay a lot of tolls, and it's very close to the bad.
Well, the other thing they do is, they all set up these things, but we have, I just take this, the sign that says passing through, and so we have our, we have one that, that we make sure it records, we got something now. And I said, hey, that's interesting, a little more important. He does rule with his new work first, just right. So sure enough, like I said, I get a, you know, twenty-five dollars for a show at the court, well, I guess I'll be my own guy.
No, I'm not holding back and order, that's. Oh, yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
And you go to a person called the first three of the three.
Oh, really? Right.
That's what I remember calling them, they're like.
Yeah.
Three thousand first, uh, fifty-seven years old, or something.
No. I like going to Washington, I, I, I think, yeah. I still, I still look for ninety-five, and, and.
Absolutely true of that, but here you go.
Really?
What happened? I drive back into the car ride.
I, I, I wasn't giving out, like, and um, I didn't know, I'm, I'm like, I'm in the car with, like, I don't have the organ for a while, but she has, is that the picture? I said, you, you got your wife's, I'm like, oh, that was really nice, I'm glad you did that, but I didn't know what was working. I'm adorable, but she had a back, I'm thinking, somebody put on black, you know?
[laughing]
Testing, testing. Recall the board meeting back to order, and we'll start with a roll call, roll call, the clerk of the board will do roll call. Here.
Here.
Here. Here. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic in which it stands, with all my attention and all my heart, in the name of the Constitution of liberty and justice for all.
May I get a motion on closed session agenda items?
I motion to accept the personal agenda as presented regarding two resignations slash terminations.
Slash retirements.
Slash retirements, thank you Denise. Two appointments and one supplement.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the closed session agenda items, all those in favor say aye, aye, opposed, the motion passes unanimously. Um, before the superintendent gives his report, and we had our organizational meeting at five thirty prior to closed session, and um, I was re-elected as chairperson, and Mr. Whitaker was elected as vice chair, and we want to thank Ms. Seeger for all the time and energy that she is dedicated to leadership with this board, and welcome Mr. Whitaker back to that seat he sat in it before, and congratulate him.
Thank you. Thank you.
Alright, and um, at that time, we also approved all the meeting dates for the, for the twenty twenty-one year, and they all are the second and fourth Mondays, with the exception of December, which would be the first and second Mondays, so there's consistency in there. Superintendent's report, Dr. Thomas.
Alright, Madam Chair, board members, uh, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, I'd like to spend some time talking about the status of the school division concerning our operation. Um, first and foremost, like to thank the, the staff, on the tremendous work that has been done in transitioning to this new A A B B in-person meeting format. Um, I know that notifications have gone out, I know that there has been tremendous collaboration between the schools, the central office staff, to ensure that we have roles that are balanced. I'd like to thank all of our staff for that. I'd like to also thank all of our teachers for their tremendous work. I know it has been challenging managing asynchronous, synchronous, and in-person instruction concurrently. Our, our teachers have done a phenomenal job. Um, and our quest to keep schools open, um, we need to certainly be mindful of maintaining a safe and secure environment for our staff. Uh, we've worked hard, at no expense, to keep our, our buildings clean and safe, and to follow our COVID mitigation protocols. On the fifth of January, um, Dr. Lane, Superintendent of Public Instruction, held a call across the state of Virginia, uh, to, to discuss the COVID rates, um, and the opening of schools, the various meeting formats from virtual to hybrid. Um, and at times, it was a pretty heated conversation regarding whether or not schools should remain open, should they be closed. Um, all of the metrics are showing increases in, uh, transmission rates, uh, in the community. Mister, Dr. Lane indicated, um, that schools should still work hard to provide in-person instruction. He indicated that, um, the V D O E has been in consultation with the Virginia Department of Health, and they've noticed that there is a mental health crisis, he didn't define that, but he indicated a mental health crisis with kids across the Commonwealth, uh, for not being in attendance at school. Um, he indicated that, uh, school divisions that are offering athletics should be offering in-person instruction, but any school division who is operating virtually should not, um, be engaging in athletics, uh, given the emphasis that should be on academics. Um, Dr. Lane indicated that only five percent of the outbreaks across the state are being attributed to, uh, children. Um, he also indicated that, uh, children are inefficient drivers of the COVID transmission, uh, and finally, that, uh, according to his analysis of the work being done with the Virginia Department of Health, that schools remain the safest, safest places, um, in spite of the, uh, increases in, in transmission. Thirdly, I spoke with, um, Dr. Williams, and he pretty much echoed those same sentiments. And I will tell you, in full disclosure, um, I have been tracking the metrics, and they are up. If you recall, we, um, were experiencing, um, a seven-day moving average of case incidents in the eighteen, nineteen range prior to, um, Thanksgiving break. When we came back from Thanksgiving break, that jumped to over thirty. Um, I have been checking the case incident rate over, uh, the last couple of days, uh, obviously following, uh, the holiday, Christmas, and New Year's, and we are up to eighty-two point four. So we have, uh, so the seven-day average has, has more than doubled. Um, so we're gonna have to monitor this carefully. Um, so we're gonna have to monitor this carefully. We're gonna really have to monitor this carefully. And, um, just publicly, I want the school division to know that if we determine that it's unsafe, we could pivot on a moment's notice. Um, pivot meaning transitioning to virtual instruction. So, um, I will continue to look at the data as we progress through the week. And, um, I'm not promising, but there could be a case where we could, I, I, I might reach out to you all and say we need to, um, schedule an emergency meeting to discuss the numbers that we're seeing. Uh, when we look at the, uh, case incident rate in the region, um, it's up in King William, it's up in King and Queen, not to our extent, no. Those two locality seem to be in the thirties. Richmond County has a, 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 a case incident rate that is off the charts right now. It's over two hundred. Um, so I've been in conversation with, um, my colleagues, uh, superintendents in the region to, to make certain that, um, you know, we share best practice, we discuss the metrics and so forth. Um, last Friday, I was on the call with the Emergency Management Services and the Virginia Department of Health. And I'd like to publicly recognize and thank Jimmy Brand. Jimmy Brand called me and he invited me to be a part of, um, a Zoom call with the Virginia Department of Health. And, and during that call, they asked me to provide them with numbers of staff members that are willing to take the vaccine. And so I reached out to, uh, Dr. Temple and, um, the Saunders. And the principals surveyed their staff and, um, I reported to the Department of Health today, a hundred and twelve staff members across the division who are willing to, uh, take the, uh, vaccine. So as you know, educators are part of the one B group. And so I, I've asked them to provide us with a date in which we can administer the vaccine here in this building, um, likely in the gymnasium with this being a rest area, um, as soon as possible. So as soon as I find out the date for the co, for the, um, vaccine, um, administration, then I will, I will let you all know. This is only for staff at this time. As you've heard, I'm sure in the media reports that, uh, they have not announced any date and time for children at this point. So, um, those are my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Consentment agenda. May I get a motion to approve our consent agenda?
I have a question for Dr. Thomas before we do that.
Okay, absolutely.
So, Dr. Thomas, with that being said, with a hundred and twelve, um, staff members, teachers, and wanting to, um, be, um, have the shot, isn't there a part A and B, uh, part one or two, part of the shots? So, and who would take the shot the first time? Do we have a date in mind for the second part?
I don't have a date as of yet for the first, um, um, administration. They, they told me they want to work us in next month.
Okay.
Um, they asked me to provide them with, uh, an exact number of people that are willing. And so that's why we rushed and gathered that information as soon as possible to try to expedite the first date. So as soon as I know that, um, I'll let you guys know. But yes, this would entail a second dose for each person as well.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right. Consent agenda, may I get a motion to approve our consent agenda?
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
And a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second to, uh, approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Do we have anybody signed up for public comment? Did anybody sign up for? I'm not gonna read all this if nobody signed up. No public comment? Action items. Action item A, the VSB policy service agreement.
Well, essentially, that's a straightforward process, um, as we've done in years past. The, uh, board took action to accept, uh, the policy promulgated by the Virginia School Boards Association. And so this is done annually. So, um, this is what is before the board at this time. And I'll take any questions if you have it.
It's the same policy that we sign every year. Any questions, concerns? Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we, um, accept the policy services agreement through the VSB.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor of accepting the VSB policy service agreement say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Action item D, Essex High School Concession Stand renovation repair award.
So you all have been provided with the details concerning, uh, the bidding process for the concession stand work. Um, I've got Dr. Temple here on standby if you have any questions. Uh, but essentially, as you can see, um, on the eleventh of December, uh, four bids were, um, submitted and opened, um, publicly in the public domain. And then, um, thereafter, um, Dr. Temple and the committee undertook a process to evaluate the bids. So as you can see, the, uh, bids were evaluated based on the bulleted items you have there. That the person attended the pre-bid conference, that it was, the bid was submitted on time, um, that an authorized representative was present, uh, that the copies requested were provided, um, and so on. So essentially, the, um, RFP, I mean, the IFB contained these items. And then Dr. Temple led a process with the committee to evaluate each bid and assign a point value. That was done separately. And, um, and so each item received a score. And so based on the scoring, as you can see, um, Brooks and Company and Dunright tied. Now, the recommendation here is for Brooks and, and, and Company, um, to be awarded the bid because their work reflected the lowest responsive and responsible bid. So their work was complete and it was, it adhered to the requirements of the IFB. Now, if you recall, this is more than what we initially thought because the scope of work that was originally developed was incomplete. So this bid reflects the scope of work that is complete in terms of the elements, um, within the project that would, um, result in a finished site. Um, in addition to this, uh, we are going to meet with Mr. Lombardo on the thirteenth of, um, January and share these materials, um, with him. And, um, formally request funding for this project based on the surplus funds that will return to the Board of Supervisors at the close of fiscal year twenty.
So in presenting this information to, uh, Mr. Lombardo and, uh, that governing body ultimately, uh, are we facing possible rejection of the request because it is significantly more than previously stated? Or are we pretty confident that the bid and process will go through?
I'm cautiously optimistic. Um, you know, in my talks with, um, Mr. Lombardo and, and select Board of Supervisors, I've been given the sense that if we formally request the, uh, funding, a portion of the funds that we, that we provided to them, and we've done our due diligence, as, as has been the case here, um, I, I, I'm of the belief that they will be supported.
So the, um, the lowest bid, what we're looking for is a board to Brooks and Company, the bid was for two hundred and forty thousand, seven hundred dollars.
And for the record, it was the lowest responsive bid. Um, there was a bid by J. M. Hayden that was lower, but it was incomplete. It did, but they did not provide a completed bid document. There was a missing sealed bond, no signed IFB. So it was, it was lowest, but it wasn't, I wouldn't, I don't feel that was a responsible bid based on the requirements of the IFB.
Which is why we set an IFB up.
Which is why we set an IFB up. Uh, and Dr. Temple, Stukley ran this past legal a couple of times. And, uh, so, you know, um, they said the work that we did was up and up. And, uh, we feel strongly about this. Um, I will tell you also, if the board approves this and we're able to get the adequate funding, I, I would like to enlist, um, a project manager of sorts that would be someone that could work on behalf of the school division. I can't, I don't see that as being some, something expensive, um, but someone who has a technical expertise to say that, hey, this change order that's been submitted is frivolous, so forth and so on.
Questions, discussion? Okay, so what we're looking for is a motion to, um, accept the, um, bid for, um, from Brooks and Company for two hundred and forty-eight thousand, seven hundred dollars for the renovation and repair of the concession stand at the, um, football field. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I salute you to accept the, uh, Brooks and Company.
Okay, I have a motion to accept the Brooks and Company bid. Do I have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of accepting Brooks and Company bid for two hundred and forty-eight thousand, seven hundred dollars for the renovation and repair of the concession stand at EHS, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Informational items. Informational item A, the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two Mississauga course catalog.
We're delighted to have Mr. Dublin and members of the Counseling Department, Mrs. Vessels and Mrs. Nash, that, uh, I'm sure will support Mr. Dublin as he presents the, uh, catalog for twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. Mr. Dublin.
Evening, Madam Chair. To the other distinguished members of the school board, Dr. Thomas. I am, uh, here this evening to present to you, uh, the proposed, uh, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two course catalog. Explain some of the design changes and the rationale behind those changes as well as the proposed courses. As you can see before you, uh, there are significant changes to the course catalog compared to the catalogs in the past. And I must admit, I, in reflection, I looked back, my very first email as an Essex County employee was from Mrs. Nash. And it was on my first day. And she needed me to look over the course catalog and give it the approval to be passed along for approval before the board. So if you can imagine, uh, in the back of my mind, that's been one of the, one of the things that almost have haunted me, um, because I just wanted to make sure that I was doing, uh, the right thing on my first day. So just a little side note there. Um, some of the design changes that you'll notice, um, it is available now in a digital format that I propose that we post on, um, the district website and on the school websites. Uh, inside the, uh, inside that format will be various links to other, uh, additional resources. It includes, uh, learning progressions, uh, for our students to follow, uh, the five Cs and the three Es. And, uh, I can elaborate on those if you wish. And finally, it, uh, includes invigorating colors. I thought, uh, if we're posting it online and if this is going to represent us, um, and our brand, we wanted to make sure that it was very presentable. Part of the rationale behind supporting the changes is to support twenty, twenty-first century skills. The five Cs are centered around, uh, skills that graduates and, uh, post, uh, postgraduate students should possess in the workforce, uh, and elsewhere. The profile of the Virginia graduate is centered around those, uh, those skills, those real world, real world skills. Uh, and it's designed to, uh, make us, make students competitive in, in the real world. I also, um, had a vision for this to be a resource for parents and students to be able to reference. They can go back, it would provide for them, um, goal-setting materials. Students could see their, uh, their whole high school path and plot it out. Brings in family engagement as well. And then finally, teacher voice. Uh, we have a staff of highly qualified teachers, uh, who definitely deserve to have a voice in what we're doing. So with that, we, as a team, through our conversations, through our meetings, through our relentless work, came up with this design. Some of the proposed courses, uh, were once offered before. And as I mentioned, the teacher voice, uh, teachers pointed out in the past where we had offered courses. And for some reason, those courses were no longer being offered. Physics two being one of them. So it's, physics two will now be available for students who have completed fix, physics one. And they are taking calculus or have already completed calculus. Uh, it'll also be offered pending adequate enrollment and staffing availability. And below, if, if you, uh, can see, there's a description of the physics two course. The next proposed course is part of the Career and Technical Education, uh, group of courses, Business Law sixty-one thirty-two. In this course, students examine the foundations of Ameri, the American legal system and learn the rights and responsibilities of citizens and businesses. This was one that was, uh, it was, similar course was, uh, recommended, uh, by the career pathways. And we just noticed that we did not have a, uh, a, a course to offer in that, in that realm. The next proposed course is also a CTE course, uh, Business Management. And this, uh, this course focuses on the. This course focuses on the basic business management concepts and leadership styles, as students explore business ownership, planning, operations, marketing, finance, economics, communications, and global marketplace, along with human relations. Again, the combination of these courses filled a void that we currently had in our current offerings. Our next proposed course is actually one of our, it's offered by one of our partners, the Northern NEC Tech Center. It's a gaming and simulation design and development course. It's one of a series of courses that are being offered consecutively by Northern NEC Tech. It's offered over three semesters, consisting of three high school credit courses, and where they'll also earn four VCCS credits. Excuse me, four VCCS courses for 12 total credits over those three semesters. And at the end, the goal is for them to develop a career studies certificate. The next course, well, the next group of courses were courses that we already offered, but we just needed to revise the course name. For example, we currently offer a course called Entrepreneurship, pardon, Entrepreneurship Education, which should probably be renamed Entrepreneurship. The course number stays the same, just the nomenclature changes. This course also will replace the Intro to Business. Intro to Business was one that was being offered, and it was out of sequence and eventually needed to be replaced by Entrepreneurship. And that goes in line with the Business Law and Business Management course name adjustments. Next are the proposed corrections, named corrections to the English Dual Enrollment Courses. We currently offer an English Dual Enrollment Composition Part I, which will be now, it'll now be changed to Dual Enrollment English Composition I, which is one semester, and English Dual Enrollment Composition Part II, which is English 112. The difference between these, there was a course that was being offered called Advanced Composition, which was improperly named. The improper name of the Advanced Composition course actually should be Survey of World Literature Part I, which is also an advanced dual enrollment course. So the sequence of Dual Enrollment English Composition I, Dual Enrollment English Composition II, and Survey of World Literature represent three semesters of dual enrollment courses that we'll be offering through English. We also have an expectation to be able to offer Survey of World Literature II, which will be an additional dual enrollment course that we're able to offer as a result of our four-by-four block schedule. If you recall, at a previous meeting, we discussed the benefits of our four-by-four block schedule, and being able to offer additional dual enrollment course opportunities was one of those benefits. And finally, some of the proposed options for acceleration, and this is the part that I'm probably the most excited about. We have eighth graders in our building who come with a certain set of skills that we'd like to take advantage of those. Advanced learners in eighth grade can benefit from acceleration. Acceleration allows students to take high school credit courses in world history, world language, earth science, mathematics, Algebra I, geometry, art, family and consumer sciences, technology education, and business and information technology. In our conversations about these changes, we discussed how we wanted to build a rock-solid brand, how we wanted to make Essex High School, make it competitive, shop it to the public as a benefit for students to arrive, a benefit for them to accelerate their learning, a benefit for them to earn college credit, all prior to leaving high school. And that's what we were able to offer based on our four-by-four schedule and our current offerings, as well as the staff, our highly qualified staff that we currently have. So with that, before I close, I just want to thank the team, because it was definitely not a one-person effort. Conversations inspired some of this work, and some actual rolling up the sleeves, digging down, scrolling through pages and pages of literature, that type of work came into putting this together. I want to thank Ms. Nash, Ms. Vessels, of course, Mr. Barfield, and our editor, Dr. Chandler. We appreciate you, and I'm definitely available to answer any questions that you may have concerning this. And that concludes my presentation. If you have no questions.
Thank you very much. Questions, comments?
I don't have any questions, but I do have a comment. I do appreciate the work that's being put in in order to not only improve the look of our course catalog, but to improve the level of quality and availability of courses. So thank you all for that. I also, I guess I do have a question. As far as dual enrollment is concerned, are we pushing that to our students? Because there's a huge difference between a dual enrollment course and an AP course. And I don't think our general public and our students understand the difference, and how they can get ahead with dual enrollment versus an AP course. So how are we sort of pushing that to our kids?
As far as the marketing aspect of it, or?
Or just getting involved in a dual enrollment? Are there certain kids who, because they've taken other courses, they sort of naturally land at dual enrollment, or is it just widespread known for the kids?
Good question. So the idea of offering it in a manual or a publication, as Dr. Thomas describes it, families of children as early as sixth grade, seventh grade, they could see their course projections, and they can decide if they want to pursue that. Obviously, if students, you know, if students are going to pursue that path and truly benefit from that, they would need to take more advanced courses at the intermediate school. And if, no need in holding them back, if a child is able to take Algebra I at the intermediate school, or Geometry at the intermediate school, and go ahead and satisfy those high school credit courses, that allows multiple opportunities for advancement once they arrive at the high school. So I believe that just making that information available would naturally promote the dual enrollment, and especially the acceleration portion of the dual enrollment.
Any other comments, questions?
I don't really know the answers, so that's why I'm asking. It may sound like a weird question, but the courses, I mean, I love them, you know, to bring them, to introduce them to Essex County, to get people, as you said, to come into Essex County Public Schools, so they can go off on all the ground with this. But with the courses that you're proposing, some of the courses indicate that there's a name change correction and everything. Some of these courses are going to be new to us. So with the addition of these courses, do we delete some courses?
So the courses that were renamed were courses that we already have. Just to be consistent with Northern NEC Tech and Rappahannock Community College, we needed to make those adjustments. So the consistency of the name, the course names and numbers, that's what precipitated those changes. But there's only two courses that we're offering that we did not offer. And they're actually a combination of one course that we will no longer offer.
But the question is, is there any other course, any other, I guess, subject that you're going to delete, because there's been courses that you're bringing in to offer?
No, no, no. The idea is to build and not take.
Anyone else?
I would just like to take a moment to just thank Mr. Dublin and the counselors for the work that they've done on this. It is a significant improvement. For me, that was the charge, improve this document. And I think they have done a phenomenal job. It's aesthetically pleasing, but yet it's extremely informative, and it's in digital form now and interactive, in line with the digital learners that we serve.
I was going to say very much the same thing. Thank you, Ms. Nash, and Ms. Vessels, and all the staff members who worked with you for putting it together. Mr. Dublin, the look of the digital catalog is just astronomical, it's just, you know, above and beyond anything that I would have expected. It is wonderful to see that. It should be encouraging to our students. I love the fact that it's interactive, and that they can get more information and have resources through it. I think that if, as parents become more and more aware of it, that it will be very useful as a family to be able to do some planning and to increase knowledge within our families of what the students are heading towards. And so I appreciate all of that. And like you, I am very excited about the options for acceleration of our eighth graders. I was part of the School Board as we decided to rearrange our grade placements and put the eighth grade back at the high school. It was there years ago when I came, went to the middle school, came back. One of the reasons why we were moving it to the high school was because we couldn't find certified teachers at the middle school to offer some of those accelerated options and opportunities for our students. And we knew that having them here opened up a whole new world to them that they didn't have sitting across the airport or the old airport. So I really appreciate the fact that you have made a partisan effort and a tangible way for students to be able to access other things within this building. And to all of your staff, just their willingness to give their talents and their knowledge so that we can continue to advance and offer more opportunities in classwork and coursework. It's so important, if they're going to be taking a course a year, that we have the courses to be able to fill those spots. And we were sadly lacking in some of the opportunities. I love the fact that we're opening up the business. It's, you know, a profile of graduate highlighted it, but it's always been a need. We've always had, technology was always really strong, and business was always there, but I feel like you've taken it to a different level. So thank you so much. Informational item B, policy JECC non-resident student attendance.
So following some of our recent board meetings, I talked with Dr. Temple and asked her to research policies that would allow us to take students for tuition. And so essentially, and Dr. Temple's on the call here, I know she looked at various policies that allow the acceptance of students, non-resident students. And what you will see in this document are essentially content that is, would strike throughs that reflect language in policies that we found, that our attorneys found unacceptable. So there are school systems operating with the language that you see here. The strike through indicates that our attorneys feel that while they're operating by this language, that it's not acceptable and perhaps legally precarious in terms of having such a policy. So this is just a first step at showing you such language, and we will continue working on it.
So this, she presented some possible policy things last month, or maybe the month before, I guess towards the end of November. But when I went online to look for our current JECC policy, we do not have one. Am I correct in that? Okay, because there was not one there.
That's correct.
Okay, so we're starting from scratch on this. And, okay. So I know that this is just a first view of it. Does anybody have any questions or comments or feedback?
So we invite you to look at it, and if there is language that you find problematic, or if you find, if there is content that you want added, we can certainly entertain that and run that past legal to make certain that it's acceptable.
So I had a question on five, I don't know if there's a point or dashes, I forgot the, 5.4 or 5 dash or whatever it is, children of non-resident employees. And in reading that, it says they may enroll their children in Essex County Public Schools tuition-free. Such enrollment shall be contingent upon meeting the criteria specified in this policy for non-resident students and is subject to provisions of paragraph A, which I'm not sure what paragraphs are, of this policy. So I think that currently, we kind of have an open-door policy for our teachers. If you have a child, you will bring them to school with you. And in reading this, and if I'm wrong on that, let me know, but that's how I have always perceived it. And in reading this, it sounds like there may be some...
5 dash A?
5 dash 4A.
5 dash?
Children of non-resident.
What page is that on?
Page 2.
This is?
And you don't have to answer it now, it's just, I just, I want to make sure that we're aligning the policy to say what... So it says that it's contingent upon all the things that anybody else, the contingencies, most of them, I mean, certainly if they're coming to us and they've been in criminal trouble or those kinds of things, we would want to look at them, but also availability and staff and class size, and we're going to limit, and I don't know.
So are you saying that you don't want that language there? Because that is suggesting, that is indicating that the student is basically coming against standing, that they're not, you know, so it's...
One of the contingencies that is listed on the other page is that there's space in the school, which, I mean, obviously, but I've always considered personally, a teacher's child, whether they live in this county or not, if they're bringing them with them, as if they were a county student. So if they added to a number and we needed to staff differently, then we would do that, rather than turning them down because we didn't have spots in that grade level.
Okay.
We can discuss that further. I just wanted to raise that. That's really the only thing, as I read through it, that stood out to me. Anybody else have anything that they, so as you're looking at it and reading over it, if you come up with anything else?
Just email me, yep.
Send an email, and I can call Dr. Temple and find out exactly if I... Send an email, and I can call Dr. Temple and find out exactly if I'm reading that the same way as she's reading it, and if it corresponds with what we're currently doing.
Okay.
All right. And informational item C, Draft Bus Driver Pay Scale.
Ms. Sivills?
That was not attached to the agenda, but Ms. Sivills has given us two handouts here. And Sharon, if you would attach them so that the public who's looking at this, they could go back and see those if they want to look at them.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are y'all?
We are, I am fine.
Well, good.
We are, we are here.
Well, good. Dr. Thomas had tasked me with reviewing our pay scale for our bus drivers. I'm not sure if you all are aware, but probably so. We've lost quite a few to a particular county. And due to that, I have asked that finance director to provide me with their salary scale. So I reviewed the salary scale, and as you can see, they've got 30 steps. Well, what I did was I took those 30 steps and condensed it to eight. And with that being said, you could see where I have step zero, they have years of experience from zero to three, and then their amount would be 13,658 to start. There's 5% increase between each step to condense it, instead of having to do 30 steps. And I ran this by Dr. Thomas. He said it looked pretty good, but we wanted to get your thoughts and feedback on this information.
Now, this is definitely draft, so give us your feedback.
Yes. Can you tell us what our current starting and top salary is?
I do not have that on me, but I know the starting is a little less than the 13,658.
If you give me a second, I can look it up.
You'll pull it up for me? Thank you. And I believe the top is 16,000. So there's only two different amounts. So you either get one amount, depending on experience, or you get this other amount. But there's no, you know, years of experience, so it's, how do you know? So this will actually clarify and help resolve a lot of the questioning when it comes to hiring drivers.
That's okay, because I've got the pay classification scale right here. So I can look it up, I'm fine. So this is being presented tonight, and then we'll bring it back for discussion again, and then it will actually be approved during the paying classification, but like...
Yes.
...in real budget time.
And this will go towards the FLOC 22 budget.
So the point of your scrutiny is to look at it, compare it to, you've been provided with a sample of school division's pay scale, the one in question that Mrs. Sivills just referenced. So the idea here is to create a competitive scale relative to that and others. As she indicated, you see a 5% increase from one step to another. And obviously compare that to what's in the current paying classification scale. So we're just trying to make for competitive salaries across the board for our drivers.
I've also indicated what our current salary benefit total is for our drivers now, and then the cost with the new scale, and it's only a difference of 18,584. And some of the drivers now are making at the top end of the scale, but may make less on this new salary scale, but we're going to grandfather them in. So this will be for new hires.
Excellent. So if that's the case, will they still move within the progression just at a fluctuated pay scale? Is that what you're saying?
Well, we will catch them up, if you will. So they'll actually freeze until they get to wherever that high number is, and then after that, then they will progress according to the scale.
And then historically, we've sort of had an issue with that whole freezing. I, that was for a whole different reason, and they were actually knocked backwards and frozen. So... So we're just saying we're not... In this case, they won't, they're being frozen at a higher salary.
Right.
Than the lower.
Until they catch up to the scale.
And this is, and just to clarify, to make sure I remember correctly, bus drivers have an option of either choosing salary or hourly?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
I think that's in a different situation that you're speaking of.
Okay. All right.
Roughly, if, based on the steps that we have, it won't make a difference as to whether, you know, it's recommended to go forward or not, but just for informational purposes, where would most of our bus drivers fall under, given this particular step scale? Do we know that, or somewhere in the middle? I know we have quite a couple that are at the lower end of the scale, meaning like step zero and one, and then we have a bunch that might be in the middle, and then we have a few that are at the scale seven and eight.
Right now...
There wasn't that many when I did my analysis for who we have currently.
Right now, the paying classification scale, we start at, we start at 13,658, and they top out at 16,458.
So they top out around step four here.
Right.
Okay, good. So you shouldn't have, there shouldn't be much freezing at all, really?
There's not.
Yeah.
So if you were to place them into this scale, the cost would be 18,000 dollars. Eighteen thousand dollars.
To switch over for festival year '22, based on the personnel we have now?
Based on current. If we gave a percent increase to everyone, then that would jump a little bit, like 50%.
Yes, it would.
Have you all had a chance to talk, show this to bus drivers and see what their reaction is with some?
No. We haven't had a chance to have that conversation.
Be curious to see what they have to say about it.
So I know that there was a specific reason why we began looking at bus drivers', salary scale for bus drivers. We held that discussion in closed session because we had several drivers who, all right, were leaving for that reason. However, I think that just as our bus driver salary scale may not be in alignment with the area, we may have other positions that don't fall in line either. And just because we're not losing people immediately doesn't mean we should wait until we lose them.
Right.
So I know that the county did a salary study, and that they've adjusted all of their salaries in response to that study. So I'm wondering, Dr. Thomas, can we do a salary study on all of our personnel to ensure that our, that our salary scales are competitive?
We can. Now, the one caveat I would say is, next month, we're going over our draft budget. So how do you all want to see that relative to the budget development timeline that we have right now?
Well, I, I wasn't looking at, well, I don't know how, I don't know what the study would cost, for starters. If it's not much, then I'd like to see us go with it, and I don't know how long, how quickly they can get it done, because I, like you, I started thinking, we're going to have to get it into the budget. If it can't be done this budget year, then I'd like to know that we're at least making the efforts so that it's in there for next year.
For sure. We can, yeah, we certainly do that.
I agree with that one.
The paying classification study that the county did, it took a couple of months.
I remember. They started it, yeah. And then the other thing is that if the cost is high, and I don't know, you know what we have in our budget for that type of thing, then I would like to see if we could approach the county about helping to subsidize that study, because they know the benefits of it since they've just been through it. And we go to them, and we ask for the salaries of our budget, and we go to them, and we ask for yearly increases and those kinds of things. And I think that this would allow us all to know that we are on factual ground for what we're asking, as opposed to just, well, this is the way we've always had it, or that's what they've always done.
Right. I agree. It would be a very objective view from an outside party.
Does the rest of the board agree with that? All right. So we'll just advise Dr. Thomas at this point to find out what that study would cost, find out how, what kind of a timeframe it would take to get it done, and then depending on the cost, approach the county about whether they would help to subsidize it and then come back with us with information. Okay?
I can do it.
All right. Any other questions on that? All right. Reports from school board members. Giving reports.
I just want to add that Eastern Region, and the Blackwood Officers, and at some point or soon, we should get a call back from you at Fort Worth to know what these, I already know as a person.
Okay. So they'll, I don't know how many of you were able to attend the last virtual meeting of the Eastern Region, but we did, they, I'm going to stand right here. The chair and vice chair were elected and are in place, and then they'll let us know about that spring meeting, which was going to be virtual. Sharon, I know that I had requested it, I don't think I've received anything from the SBA, or any of us registered at this point for the Capitol Conference in January. Capitol Conference, myself, Ray, anybody else? It's January 26th and 27th, right? I think, but the 27th actually is it, the virtual part would be the 26th, but the 27th is when we go to the Capitol, and we won't be doing that.
Listen to a report today, beginning with our legislators.
Beginning with our legislators is going to be a challenge, because they're not meeting where they normally meet, and they're going to try to do whatever it takes to stay safe. So it's going to make a challenge as board members to meet with our delegates, and it can be a challenge.
The session opens on January the 13th, and the SBA gives a daily update that you can tag into and read and keep up to date on everything. It becomes very overwhelming following everything, and what I've learned with my almost eight years' experience on the board is that you follow these bills, and then they cross over, and then they change, and then they go to the governor's desk, and you might have been following 260 bills, and in the end, there were only 40 bills. And so you don't want to follow each and every one, but you do need to know. And in order to help eliminate some of those that are really bad, the SBA is a huge advocate and lobbyist for us, but they need our support in that. So I will probably, this year, since it is more difficult as the legislative representative that you selected me for earlier, I will probably send out emails when the SBA is asking for us to contact our legislatures. And we may even want to allow for a group response so that, so that as the legislative representative chair, that I could just send something to our legislatures and say, Essex County School Board would like you to know that we disagree with SB whatever, or that we are highly supportive of, you know, HB whatever. So as we get into that session and begin, things begin rolling, I'll come back with you on information about that. Okay, any other school board reports?
Let me just say this, and I know Dr. Thomas is well aware of it. They talked about keeping us harmless and blinding the fact that we've got decreased enrollment, so that's going to be a challenge to see what, how they may vote on that.
We did get some news about that, and there is what's called whole harmless funding for decreases in ADM. So that's really good news to hear. That will take us into next year, but long-term, I don't know how they are going to deal with the enrollment decreases. But that won't factor into the budgeting process coming, going forward, so that's a, that's a good thing. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Okay. May I get a motion to adjourn? Yes. Five or 5:30? Five o'clock? And we'll meet in Richmond County for that. Thank you. All right, may I get a motion to adjourn?
Hold on, hold on.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned, thank you.